Test.
All right. Thank you for your patience. It's 6:03 and I'll call the first committee meeting, Public Safety, to order. Did I say it was 6:03? I think I did. All members are present, as well as Chief Miller, Chief Mccone, and our city administrator. The next order would be public comment. If anyone has any public comment related to the agenda tonight, step up front. Hearing none, seeing none. Reading and approval of the minutes from July the 7th. What is committee's pleasure?
Motion to approve as submitted.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second, Mr. Allgood. Any corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes from July the 7th, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed. Motion carries unanimously. First up with our reports from city officers is Chief Mccone.
Happy late birthday. Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of committee. I'm just gonna do a quick update, like I said, budget, which like I said, we're in the beginning of it, so it's all good. We've had a total calls as of today, 3,327 calls. And we've asked also the same company that done our sighting at Station 1 on Miller Road, they actually done, redone our sighting on our fire safety house too, fridge charts. That's all.
All right. Any questions?
Pretty simple.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Getting go the fiscal year, so there we are. Thank you. Chief Miller?
King, Mr. Crowley, Mr. Allgood. Right now, we are in, are good on the budget. We're in the process of getting another K-9, which was budgeted for this year. That'll give us three K-9s. They'll all be aged, they'll have a little bit of age in between them that way that we're not replacing them all at one time. National night out. As you see, it's raining. We're gonna make a call in the morning about 10:30 or 11:00. Then we'll put out new releases and put it on Facebook and we're, our scheduled redo date is gonna be September 20th, which is a Saturday. And we're gonna do it during the day because school will be in then, so kids won't be going home and then having to go straight to bed, so we can do it on the Saturday. We just passed our South Carolina law enforcement accreditation through the state. Lea, we're at the end of our accreditation on it, so our online assessment on that's gonna be August 22nd. On October 6th, we'll have our own site where we'll have an assessor come and he'll talk to officers and everybody. And then after we get through with that, myself, Elizabeth Garrison, our Kalia person, and Lieutenant Osborne will be going to Arizona to meet the council and get our certification. But.
Excellent. I was thinking this morning, good news is, weather's cool. Bad news, it's raining as far as tomorrow night's national night out. It's always hot as blue blazes.
Yeah, we're, say sometimes weather.
I know. Can't, can't control it. Any questions for chief? All right. Thank you. Yep. Okay, we have no unfinished business and our new business tonight is school resource officer agreement with Greenville County School District.
Yes, Ms. King, as you, as usual, about this time of year, we redo our agreement with the school, Greenville County Schools for the SROs. This year is for the 2020, 2025, 2026 school year. We're gonna have, just like last year, we're gonna have two at Malden High School, one at the Career Center, one at Malden Middle, one at Malden Elementary, and one at Bethel Elementary. That, we, myself and Mr. Duncan were in contact this year when contracts were being renegotiated. And starting this year, the school district will be paying $157,500 to support the SROs in Malden Schools. That's an increase of, from $120,000 from this past year and years before. This is just for the public schools. We were approved for the two charter schools, but that'll be coming for committee next month.
Perfect. And I see that the only other change is that the agreement will automatically renew?
Yes.
Does that, will automatically renew even with, if we have rate adjustments, or would that come back before committee?
It'll. It'll, if, if we have different adjustments and stuff, it'll have to be renewed.
Okay.
Make any adjustments.
Perfect. I like that because usually we're approving the exact same agreement on an annual basis. And for those of you who are not aware, all of the public schools in the city of Malden all have school resource officers through the city of Malden. So we worked, it's been like that for a while, but we worked really hard to make that happen 10-plus years ago. All right. Any questions on this before? Yes, sir, Mr. Allgood?
Just, just one quick one. On your point, having one at each school where there's a dedicated resource officer, is this your two? Because then we have them where it used to be shared, some of the schools shared?
This is your two of having them in every school. Prior to that, we had a officer that went back and forth through the elementary school before, between the elementary schools. But last year, our, the one that, the grant that we got last year approved for both of them.
Right.
That's, they're trying to get them all. The governor's wanting them in every school, so we're slowly getting them there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allgood.
Much.
All right.
To make a motion to send a full council, the agreement as presented?
Have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Second, from Mr. Allgood, to forward the school resource officer agreement with Greenville County School District to full council. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. None opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, chief. All right. That leads us to our second public comment. Seeing none, committee concerns. National night out. Stay tuned. All right. What do we have on adjournment?
A move.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We stand adjourned at 6:11. Finance and policy up next.
Ready on the left? Okay, I'd like to go ahead and call this finance and policy meeting to order. The date is August 4th, the time is 6:11. Members present are myself, Michael Reynolds, Ms. Carol King, and Mr. Taft Matney, as well as finance director and our city administrator, and I believe I saw Mark Putnam back there. There he is. Our human resources officer, as well as various audience members. Thank you all for being here. First order is called order, second is public comment. This is for items on the agenda. Do we have any speakers for items on the agenda? Hearing and seeing none. Next is gonna be reading and approval of minutes from June 2nd, 2025. What do I hear?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve. I have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carries unanimous. Next item's gonna be reports and communications from city officers. Mr. Seth Duncan, you're up first.
Thanks, sir. Just a couple of quick updates. One, that Prince of Egypt tickets are on sale at the Malden Cultural Center, so grab those tickets. They're going fast. Opening night is in just a couple of weeks, so they've been working really hard. This is going to be an amazing production, a do not miss, because when you hear about it afterwards and you missed it, you will have wished you had been there. So just like Hunchback last year. So also, in addition to that, just wanted to say that although things are progressing slowly, the work is continuing on 276, and should be getting an update on that tomorrow. And then if you recall, the Ashmore Bridge, Road, Bridge project was completed actually earlier than DOT had anticipated. So that road's been open for a few weeks now, but just wanted to convey that as well. And that's all I have for tonight, sir.
Round of applause for SC DOT. We have to congratulate them. They do something well. All right. Thank you, Mr. Duncan. Any questions for Seth? Mr. Duncan, excuse me. All right. Next up, we have finance director, Ms. Holly Abercrombie.
Well, I don't have anything to report right now, as we've started the new year and everything looks good right now. I will come back later and we will talk about the prior year. So other than that, all I've got right now.
Budget looks great. We got any questions? Very good. Next, Mr. Mark Putnam, our human resources director.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, committee members. I just wanted to make you aware that our employee, our annual employee evaluation process started July, the week of July 28th, and will go through about mid-September, and all of our employees will receive an evaluation and how they're doing and things like that. And if it's warrant, a merit increase. But we are working with each department, department heads, to make sure that these are done timely and done fairly and through that. We are also excited to announce that we are entering into a partnership with a new EAP partner. EAP is an employee assistant program, and we found that with our employee base increasing, the number of employees we have, we needed to offer more resources. And our current EAP provider is doing a good job, but it doesn't have those resources. So we will be partnering, starting September 1, with my group out of Charlotte. It's gonna have an app, it's gonna have things that they can talk with people via Zoom, or they can go and talk to them in person if they need to, but it's gonna be a much more broad-based EAP program that we, we really need at this time, and it will probably carry us into the future for quite a while. I will say that there will be no impact on budget. It's actually gonna come in a few dollars cheaper than what we currently have, and we're kinda excited about that. And to kick it off on September 23rd, we're gonna have a health day for our employees. We're gonna have the, my group here doing a presentation of what they offer. We're also gonna have some health vendors throughout the, the community, and we're gonna have a food truck. So we're gonna kinda kick it off with that on September 23rd.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Putnam? Mr. Matney?
I, I think it's great that you're doing that and recognizing the, the staff as it's grown. If you would just mind shooting us a reminder about the 23rd, so that we can add it to our calendars.
We'll do that. Absolutely. Thank you.
I think to follow up, Mr. Matney, I think, Mr. Putnam. Thank you. Good job. I was gonna congratulate, but if you ain't gonna hear me, never mind. All right. No, I think always taking staff evaluations and looking at where we're at as a, as a community, as a, as a city, and reevaluating constantly is an important part of it. So, Mr. Putnam, thank you for continually looking for ways to enhance our employee experience. Okay. Next up, we have unfinished business, which we have none. Next one's gonna be discussions on committee and council rules. So. Mr. Duncan, you wanna kick it off a little bit? I'll, I'll kinda talk about a little background real quick, and then you follow up.
Okay.
This is just one of those things that's come up a couple of times. Initially, where we've talked about with technology advancing and us having the ability to zoom in and have meetings elsewhere and have members present and not present, what that looks like as a council, and how we continue to work together and move forward. So we've had the issue a couple of times where someone may not have been present and should vote or could vote, or having some clarity on that. That's kinda what kicked this off. But as we evaluated that, Mr. Duncan and I thought it'd be good just to kind of take the 30,000 foot view, while we know we got a little thing we wanna look at, but let's, let's broadly look and see what else there is. Mr. Duncan, being a certified registered municipal nerd, has probably seen more meetings than we would ever, I could dream of meetings. So I think just having his experience and, and having his experience and connections on how we do things here and constantly evaluating and looking on is important. So with that, Mr. Duncan?
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Being a nerd of many things, sir. I take that as a.
I mean that with all due respect.
I take it as a badge of honor. So I mean, you know, we're, we're good company there.
I think you actually said that in your, in your interview, by the way.
Probably I did, yeah. Anyway, so thank you, sir. Just real quick, you know, the, over the last couple of years that I've been on staff, we have, I've had different questions or, or ideas that people have had have been popped up, proposed to me, but we've never really sat down and said, hey, let's take a look at our rules and procedures and make any modifications, tweaks, or adjustments. And so, given that now we've kind of gotten through the budget season, so the budget season over is just kind of our, a lull where we can do some extra fun projects like this. We, staff is proposing this conversation tonight to kinda just kick off, to throw out there some ideas for the committee members, but also the council members who are present, different topics that, that you all may wanna look at, at adjusting or modifying. Given that committee rules were last updated in February 2021, council rules were updated in June 2005, and some of the other rules that the council has were codified back in 2013. And so a lot of those elements, just from time to time, need to be reviewed and see what needs to be updated. Things that may be of particular note, and, and the city's changed, the staff has changed. I know we've changed certain functions and dynamics of the reorganization and things like that. So some possible modifications to reflect the will of council, and some areas to consider would be committee policy areas, meeting start times, public comment times, committee size, remote voting eligibility, use of consent agenda, and other ideas and topics. And so really, was really just starting a conversation, brainstorming, and then ultimately, if council feels as though there, there's a need to make some changes, then we could look at what those are and how to best codify those as, as council will see fit.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. I have less to have two committee members that are never unwilling to share their opinions. So I turn it over to you guys. What do you think?
Well, I'm not.
Again, I mean, all due respect.
No, I appreciate that, Mr. Reynolds. So for me, I think we're good unless someone can throw out some other opinions on standing committee rules. We amended those in 2021 and spent a lot of time hashing that out in 2021. So I, I personally don't have anything on the standing committee rules. To me, the only thing that jumps out just from the recent pass would be perhaps we need to update the remote voting wording. Trying to get to that page. Mr. Matney, if you want to finish off, and then we can go back to maybe looking at that. I know that's probably a hot topic.
So what you're saying is you want me to stall for you?
Send the baton.
Okay, so I'll stall. I know that this is the finance and policy committee, and our job is to deal with finance and policy, hence the name. But this is not something that just affects one committee or one group. So I almost, at the, and I hesitate to say this, at the risk of adding another meeting, but I think that it's something that all of council needs to have their sleeves rolled up and, and to discuss. I, I almost feel that this is more, more fitting for a workshop, because there're gonna be a lot of opinions, and we're just three of seven. And, and I would like for all seven to be able to, to discuss it, and we, we go back and forth in an informal setting, the way that we do in, in workshops. The one area that I will say, I, I would like to potentially see a change is, and it's noted here on the, on the front sheet, is the committee size. Because while we may have 30,000 people in the city of Malden, we're still a small town, and we know each other. And we run into each other at the grocery store. I mean, Ms. King sits in front of me, two pews at church. You know, we're at city events together, and state law says that, you know, a, a chance meeting is not going to circumvent the unadvertised meeting rule. And it gets very, it, it can very quickly turn into an unadvertised or unnoticed meeting. If we extended committee size, you know, we can have conversations. You know, Ms. King and I could talk on the phone and not have to worry about breaking the law. We can, you know, not necessarily have to worry so much what we say at church. Good Lord will get us on that one. But we can't go from three to four, because then we're looking at an even number. Then that takes us up to five, and we have a total of seven on council. So I mean, it makes the committees larger, but I think that if we think about it, it may also give us the opportunity to, to have some discussions that we might not be able to have otherwise. So, you know, nothing to take action on tonight, just something to think about. But we'd have to talk about it here, because we can't talk about it over the phone.
That's fair.
Thank you, Ms. King.
Thank you, Ms. Matney. Mr. Mr. Matney. Ms. King, did you wanna follow up?
I, I think that's a good point. Probably the last time we, we looked at, especially standing committee rules, we went with a workshop-type environment so that everyone could have their input. So I am all for that. I would just ask that, prior to, if everyone could kinda look over where we are today and come in with thoughts, so that we can have a productive workshop, and maybe a one-and-done kinda deal, and then sent, you know, then we can reconvene at the committee level and move forward.
So here I was lauding their opinions, and the opinion was to not have opinion here. Got it. No, thank you. I have no problem with that. I think it's something if we can, Mr. Duncan and I can work together, find a time that makes sense, that we could have a couple of hours, hour and a half set aside to, to talk about it. And, and along the same lines, the remote voting eligibility, use of consent agenda, committee sizes I had not considered, but certainly I'm willing to talk about it. Okay.
Sorry.
Yes, Ms. King?
I just wanna add, I mean, to me, there's, there's not, I mean, I don't think it would be very time-consuming for the workshop, because I, personally, I don't think there's a lot to change, but that may just be me. I'm just curious what your thoughts are as far as what you wanted to look at tonight, as we were discussing.
No, it was, it was strictly for discussion, and the, the remote voting eligibility was the one that, to your point, the most recent pass, where the other ideas were our citywide guru, who, who thought it may be, again, while you're doing something like this, you might as well look at a 30,000-foot view and say, is there anything else that can be tweaked?
Exactly.
But that would be the, the main one that I had concern with on how we move forward. But I am certainly sensitive to being a body of seven, and there being seven important opinions, or at least we think so. So, yes, Mr. Matney?
Well, going back to what you just mentioned in terms of remote voting, I know that coming in here tonight, I had a pretty strong opinion on some changes that need to be made, but I, I know that we have other members that sit with this body, that have seen and heard things recently that have, have given me pause. And I, I think that, consider, considering where we are in terms of rapidly changing technology, it would benefit us to, to have those, those discussions before we make any hard and fast decisions.
Good. Agreed. Mr. Duncan and I, we'll get something set on the calendar, and we'll put it together. All right, guys. Thank you. Next item is going to be FY 2025 preliminary year-end summary memo. That's gonna be Ms. Abercrombie.
Yes. Yes, it's great news. So yes, we just completed the year, and we've supplied council with a very preliminary memo about the status of the year-end, and it's very preliminary, because it's already changed. We've received some more revenues since I've provided that to y'all, as well as some more expenditures. But overall, we're gonna be close, and I'm here to report on the good year we had. Our revenues were way over budget. And I'll start with property taxes. They're number one. And there are several reasons. Number one was, we were conservative on our projections to begin with. Two, citizens were paying more current this year. So in the delinquents, you kinda have it crossed in fiscal years, but it was more, more paying current. And the last is kinda twofold. The growth in the neighborhoods is kinda hard to project, because it's anywhere from a 12 to 18-month lag of when you actually receive the income from, from houses. So that's a little hard to pinpoint. And then the second part of that is, some of the, some of the new growth is leased only. So there's gonna be a difference between the 4% and the 6%, and that's kinda hard to pinpoint as well. So those are the four reasons for the property taxes. Business license was our biggest overall difference. The city business licenses, I think, are probably just. Overall, businesses had a good year, and profits were up, and, and therefore, some of that is, is in that, as, as well as some growth. And then, as David was talking about this morning, they, they proactively went after making sure that they were current with rental, rental properties, that they were paying their business license as well. So I think a lot of that came from there. And then the municipal association business licenses that they collect on insurance companies and the brokers' taxes, those are hard to predict, and they were up as well this year. And then the last one was our permits. They were, they were pretty significantly up as well. Part of that is probably still the new development going on. Yeah, Helene probably played a little part in that, where people having to get their houses fixed and trees out of their yards and all of that, and those, those companies have to have biz, permits to do that and stuff. So those are the three big ones. And then expenditures, for all intents purposes, we were dead on. They were 2% under. So expenditures were pretty much dead on, but that's the reason for our big one. And we give that to you with a plan that we would like y'all to approve. If you have any other ideas or what have you, we'd love to know that. But we, we provided you with our layout of what we would do with the added fund balance, and that's what we're asking you to do tonight, is give your blessing or not in the plan. And if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions for Ms. Abercrombie? Yes, Mr. Matney?
Not related to the move-forward plan necessarily, but this is a reassessment year for Greenville County. What are you anticipating as a result of that reassessment?
In all my years here, the reassessments I've been a part of, we, which, you know, reassessment is, they try to keep you net zero. And we'll stay there, but in, in mine, we've, we've usually made just a little, and, you know, because they can't get you exactly at zero. So our windfall has been just a little, little minute amount. Our, of course, our millage will roll back, but our revenues will stay pretty neutral.
Thank you, Mr. Matney. Ms. King?
I just wanted to add that, as always, Holly's spot on when it comes to expenditures, and we never complain when we have more funds available. So that's a, a win-win. And I just can't have, help but laugh. I think she said preliminary three times. Very. For those who know Holly, that's Holly.
Very preliminary.
Thank you.
Oh, and just, just, just to note, there'll be, the numbers will be non-preliminary final in November. But audit starts, they're coming out at the end of September to start up the process, just, just for added information.
And I will also note that it is, what, August 4th, and usually we can't get this out of Holly until September, October, because she wants it to be perfect. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. King. No, I think the, the big takeaway from that for me is how, you know, we're looking from 18 months ago, trying to project revenue, and how difficult that can be. So sometimes, items like this can be used as weapons. I look at this. I look at this as this body, this council staff doing a great job of trying to be conservative of our revenues and not be the issue that you just, you didn't underspend, you did the things you said you were going to do and you did better on the revenue side. That's the way you want these budgets to work. And when you have a surplus, big or small, that's the way you want it to work. So it's good planning, it's good thought. And again, it's good leadership from department head down on trying to especially keep expenditures in check. But to do that, you also have to be planning really well from department head and down. So kudos to not just the finance department, but the city staff as a whole. So, that said, good job. What do I hear on this? Thoughts, comments, concerns?
I move that we go ahead and forward the plan for the unallocated funds to full council for approval.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Matney. I have a motion to approve the plan, the unallocated funds to full council with recommendation of approval. I have a second. Any other discussion? Yes, Mr. Matney.
I just want to throw a couple of things in there. You know, we were expecting, fully anticipating to receive money from Columbia this fiscal year on projects that would have helped the city. But because of back and forth between the two bodies in the General Assembly, there were no projects that made it in the budget this year. But when you look at how City Hall operated when Helene came through after the generator went down and Seth and our entire staff were able to, you know, use duct tape and baling wire to make the city work for several days, you know, when we're looking at being able to purchase a full facility generator for City Hall to keep it up and running in case of another emergency, you know, those are the kind of things that we're looking at in this plan. And, you know, I think that we do ourselves an injustice if we don't reinvest this back in the city, whether it's for the general fund balance, the full facility generator, capital projects, transportation projects within the city. I think we owe it to our people.
Couldn't have said better myself, Mr. Matney. Thank you. All right. That said, I have a motion and a second with no further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, like sign carries unanimous, forward to full council with a recommendation of approval. Okay. Next item is going to be public comment. Hearing and seeing none. What do we have on committee concerns? Yes, Mr. Matney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since economic planning and development is not meeting this evening and I don't have that committee, I want to take a minute to thank all of city staff, all of our, you know, police department, fire department, community development, public works, administration, everybody, recreation, everybody in the city who pitched in to make Amped Up Fridays another huge success for the city. I mean, we had thousands upon thousands of people coming into the city every Friday night, enjoying what we have to offer at the cultural center, and it doesn't happen without that full team. So I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matney. Ms. King?
I'm at a loss as to what I'm going to do on Friday nights now.
It'll be football soon. Not that that's Friday night, but.
True. Well, high school.
It is for some of us.
Yes.
Okay. Committee concerns, hearing and seeing none. What do I hear on the adjournment?
It's a moved.
A motion.
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carries unanimous. Next meeting up is going to be BDS. The time is 6:37.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and call BDS to order at 6:37. Mr. Allgood's here and I am stepping in for Chairman Steenback, who is stuck in traffic on his way down I-85. Going to bring us to our first public comment period of the evening. Do we have anybody that would, we have signed up or would like to speak? Please step forward. You have three minutes. Please give us your name and address.
Gladys Knight, I mean Gladys Duvall, 326 Pollyanna Drive, they live in Harrington. I was here at the last meeting and I have several questions that came up. Some of the topics may be in your new business, but I'd like to bring them up. It's my understanding that Greenville County has put a pause on all cluster development. Is that not true?
Ma'am, this is not a back and forth. This is strictly for public comment.
All right, let me just make my comments.
You're good.
Given that, I just wanted to understand how that affects the cottage green that was approved by this committee last meeting. Secondly, there was a lot of discussion about annexing in property into Malden, and I see that there is in the new business property that's, I guess, behind the Sphinx that's going to be annexed in. So I was a little confused as how this committee could approve a development when all the land is not there yet for that development within Malden County. Secondly, there was a lot of discussion, well, there was a discussion about traffic studies, traffic studies, traffic studies have showed this. I would like to make a request and I'll make the same request with Greenville County and anybody else that I need to. I think this community needs to see the traffic study that's being referenced dealing with Fork Shoals Road and Ashmore Bridge Road so we can understand how that study has approved all of these developments with no improvements to the roads. That's a major concern I know for most of my neighbors, whether they live in Harrington or whether they live off Ashmore Bridge, it is a major concern to us. My request is that at one of these meetings, we get to view the full traffic study that embodies all of these developments. And as I said, I will also make that request at the Greenville Planning as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Please give us your name and address.
Yes, my name is David Kraft, 209 Dodd Trail, Greenville, in another Harrington subdivision resident. First off, I had noticed, I was here for this last meeting and I noticed a lot of misinformation being stated by the developer as far as pertaining to no rental properties within a three mile radius and what have you, when there's apartment buildings being built right around the block and there's quite a few apartment developments being developed. However, also with the fact that I am basically with my fellow residents in technically a type of no man's land where we fail to be represented or be considered by the city of Malden and what have you, because we live outside the area for us to, for our voice to even be heard. I am under the impression that since the committee members unanimously agreed to the rezoning due to this project from an out of state developer, that they obviously have no, they will not suffer any negative impacts such as all of us residents will be. And plus, since there was a lot of misinformation from the developer, I don't trust that any of these studies that were provided by the developer to be accurate. And yet I didn't hear anything also about impacts on crime or, again, our quality of life being even considered. I strongly recommend, and I will attend any Greenville City meetings and what have you, to try to oppose this to the best of my ability, but I strongly wish the committee would reconsider the rezoning because to me, it's better to keep it commercial and provide for jobs that could bring people in rather than bring people in and have them scatter around to try to look for jobs, which could increase crime and affect, have an adverse effect on everybody's way of life. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Administrator, two comments have come up about this committee. Is that referencing the Planning Commission?
Yes, sir.
Because this is the first time that this committee has heard anything.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
So the Planning Commission?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? All right, hearing none, then we will move to the reading and approval of minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
We have a motion to approve. I will second. Is there a discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The ayes have it. Minutes are approved as submitted. Reports communications from city officers. Mr. Dearhog.
All right, good evening, committee. Just a few brief items tonight. First of all, I've been reporting for months about the increase in permits and business licenses, so it's great to see the effect that's having in the revenues that Ms. Abercrombie just reported. Home construction has begun in the new Hawk Haven community that's located on Rose Circle. This is the area right behind the new fire station headquarters. The new detached single family homes there being constructed by Rosewood Communities and all that community will include 29 homes and will be very similar to Riley Trace, which is also by the same builder, and they will connect in the back. There'll be a new pizzeria in town called Crispy Crust. They've begun working on moving into the old Hungry Howies over here on East Butler Road. And then last, we have four new businesses that have opened their doors this last month. This includes ATS Kids, which specializes in occupational, physical and speech therapy, Blended Butterfly slash Connie's Wellness Suite, which specializes in massage therapy and wellness coaching, Life MD, which is a customer call center, and Southern Element Labs, which is a third party analytical testing laboratory for dietary supplements. So we're glad to welcome these new businesses to the city of Malden and answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Allgood, anything for Mr. Dearhog?
At this time.
All right, then we'll keep moving. There's no unfinished business. That takes us to new business. The first item has been pulled, so that takes us to the, to 6B.
All right, I'll give you a little intro.
Run it over real quick. That was pulled?
Start this back up. I'll give you just a brief update on item A. That was a rezoning along New Nookley Ferry Road. The developer dropped out of that deal, so the property owner has asked to request to rezone that property to be withdrawn. So there is no action necessary to take on that one anymore.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Acting Chairman. I'll go ahead and give you an introduction to item B. This is a request to rezone two acres that are located 1123 East Butler Road. That's the intersection of East Butler and Verden Road. That property right now is currently zoned S1 and the applicant there has requested to rezone it to C2. And this is for the purpose of constructing a new bank at that intersection run by first citizens. This went to the Planning Commission this past month. It came out of the Planning Commission with a unanimous recommendation of approval. There were no public comments that were provided at that hearing and the staff recommends that as well, that this rezoning be approved.
Is there a motion? Or questions for Mr. Dearhog?
Let me, can I start with questions?
Go ahead.
That'd be great. Thank you. I do see that there was the one, assuming I'm looking at the right one, because we've got a lot on the docket here, right? There was someone who did talk about asking questions about left hand turn. Were those questions addressed? Did the developers say what those questions were?
Oh, yes. Thank you about that. Yes, the developer did respond to those questions at that and basically talked about the either inline medians or the pork chop, as they call it, that will be in the driveway there to discourage left hand turns. Ultimately, when they go through their plan review, plan submittal and plan review process, those will be submitted through DOT for their final approval.
Okay. And do you happen to know whether or not the bank, this is the second location or is this a relocation for them? Because aren't they already in the city of Malden?
Yeah, this will be a new location.
That's all the questions I have, Mr. Matney. Do you have any? Otherwise I will make a motion.
State your motion, Mr. Allgood.
All right. I will make a motion that we forward this to full council, the petition to rezone the two acre plot of land at 1123 East Butler Road from S1 District to C2 District.
We have a motion and I will second. Is there a discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The ayes have it and we're forwarding that to full council with a recommendation for approval. Mr. Dearhog?
All right, the next two items on the agenda, C and D relate to the same projects. The first is a request to rezone about 25 acres located at Fork Shoals Road and Ashmore Bridge Road. This is kind of surrounding the new Sphinx gas station out there. The property is currently zoned C2 and the applicant's request to rezone it to RM multifamily. This is for the development of a mixed housing residential community being proposed there. And in a moment, I'll let the applicant just give you a brief introduction about their project that they are considering for that location. This went to the Planning Commission this past month. The Planning Commission recommended approval of this rezoning by unanimous vote. There was a public hearing conducted at that meeting. There were seven residents from the Harrington community, or I'm sorry, six residents from the Harrington community that spoke in opposition to this. This is a community that's in Greenville County, just a little further south along Fork Shoals Road. There was also one Greenville City resident who happens to work at the 3M facility there who also spoke in opposition. And then the pastor for Take Heart Church, which is located right next door, spoke in support of the project. And you have a summary in your reports about that public hearing. The staff has reviewed this and has finds some exciting things to look forward to about the proposed development, including that it's bringing a mixed, or sorry, a middle housing project into the city, which we don't have much of and which is kind of a missing market throughout the nation and one that many communities are trying to bring into their community. So we're excited that we have the prospect of bringing something like that here into Malden. Staff supports the rezoning that's before you tonight. And I would like, with your permission, to turn time over to Mr. Frank Warren. He can tell you just briefly a little bit more about the project.
Thank you, Mr. Dearhog.
Excuse me. Good evening, everybody. I'm Frank Warren with HMF Americana, the developer for the project. So are you operating the slides? Okay. And no pointer. Is that right? So, okay. So with me here tonight is Tim Crawford, the owner of HMF Americana, Daniel Merritt, who is with Seaman Whiteside. So Daniel, I'm going to ask you if you can, in a minute, stand up with the plan so you can actually, we can point to the different parts of it. And then Alan Reed with Impact Designs is here. He is our traffic consultant. All right, so I've just got a few minutes. I just want to say that, first of all, that we are excited about the chance to develop in Malden. The first thing that we do when we come into a town or a market is look at the comp plan. I think you guys are in the midst of updating yours right now, but the existing one supports our project. There is a commercial center, as we all know, under construction at Ashmore Bridge and Fork Shoals Road with the Publix. And to us, multifamily is a logical transitional use between industrial and single family at Arden Woods and other nearby neighborhoods. And I'm going to read you a couple of things directly from your comp plan. The goal, the first goal in your comp plan is to encourage development, and I'm quoting, "development patterns that reduce the need for short distance automobile trips." Objective 1.1 states, "Encourage mixed-use development that provides for neighborhood-scale commercial uses and public schools within walking distance of new residences." We are proposing to do just that. In addition to that, I would also add probably jobs and a church to that since they are next door to us. As was alluded to earlier, there are just major employers within a three mile radius of this site, over 5,200 jobs. By our count, within that same three mile radius, there are no professionally managed apartment communities. There is rental housing absolutely, but no professionally managed apartment communities. So we feel like we are addressing a jobs, rental housing imbalance in the three mile radius. And we'll offer these people a shorter commute. So I've got some bullets here. Why we think this site is well suited for multifamily. The first one addresses the jobs, housing, rental housing imbalance. David alluded to the missing middle housing and we can talk, we'll talk in a few minutes about what the cottage green. about what the Cottage Green is. But it is a missing option within the immediate market area. As I spoke earlier, we're going to be part of a mixed-use node where residents could support the new public center. Multifamily to us is the logical transitional use. And then I've got Alan here, who could speak to it in more detail. Traffic has been mentioned. Under your existing C2 zoning, a 280,000-square-foot shopping center could get built on this property. And our folks at Seaman Whiteside have shown that to us. That development would generate over 18,000 vehicle trips per day. That is 3.7 times higher than what our development will create. We've also heard about schools. In our existing communities, less than 5% of our residents have school-aged children. I can't stand here and say that it's going to be that number here, but even if it's higher, I've already talked to the school system. They have looked at our plan, and they have told me that there's adequate capacity at Casson and Woodmont Middle and Woodmont High. So we would not be generating any kind of issue with the schools. Okay, so what do we have proposed? Daniel, if you could stand up with the plan and try to show us so everybody can see it. We have a couple of different residential components. The, if you can keep going. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So we've got 200, and if you'll go back for just a second. Yeah. So the Cottage Green, which I'll show you, is 239 units on 18.8 acres. That is mostly single-level living. Then we have a section that is kind of more traditional multifamily, more typical three and four-story buildings. We have a commercial parcel next to Spinks that is 1.13 acres. And then I want to talk about the road improvements and then show you what they are on the plan. The existing intersection of Ashmore Bridge and Perimeter Road, I think we can all agree, is pretty much a mess. SCDOT is going to require a roundabout at that intersection. It will be a five-point roundabout, including the 3M entrance. We will also be doing dedicated right and left turn lanes on Fork Shoals Road at our Cottage Green entrance, south of Spinks, and then a tapered right-turn lane on southbound Fork Shoals Road at Ashmore Bridge. Now we can talk about the plan. So the units in yellow, that is the Cottage Green. That's the community that is mostly single-level living, cottages, duplexes, some two-story buildings at the entrance. I have some visuals to show you. The pink is the traditional multifamily, the three- and four-story buildings. You can see the roundabout at Perimeter and Ashmore Bridge, and then the turn lanes would be up on Fork Shoals Road. Yeah? This is the plan in a rendered format, so you can see, if you follow along Fork Shoals, our main entrance will feature a green, which is our main street there. Thank you. And then the commercial is between Spinks and that entrance. Let's just keep going. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Sorry. Yeah, sure. Yeah, so, yeah. So the, yeah, so Fork Shoals, of course, is north-south, so, yeah, it shows up as sort of east-west here, so understand your confusion there. There you go. Thank you. So the new Publix would be just off the map there to the right. Okay. So the units in yellow, the Cottage Green, I wanted to talk a minute about this. This is really a, we call it a transformative housing concept. It is in the build-to-rent category. We call it horizontal multifamily because it's mostly single-level living. And I want to step back a little bit and talk about it. Tim studied housing and demographics for five years before he ever put a shovel in the ground for the first Cottage Green, refining the concept, and it has been tremendously successful where he's done it. And so I just wanted to give that sort of background. It is built off of that Main Street concept that I talked about earlier, creating that true sense of place when you arrive. The Main Street, if you could keep going, the Main Street does have a unique two-story product. If you look at the third image to the right, that's one of our Main Streets, where you can see the leasing center, the amenities center, the two-story product, and the green. So these are just some images from completed communities. The upper left is one of our typical greens. Then you've got the community entrance. Couple of signatures for our communities. We like to do clock towers and lights, party lights over the entrances. The product, like I said, is really unique. The upper right is one of our patio homes or duplexes. Those are attached at the back. The patio homes and the cottages all have private yards, fenced-in closed yards. Our residents love that. You can see the two-story building along the lower left there. Those really just look like big houses. They either have six or eight units in them, so they're small footprint buildings. And then the middle image on the bottom, that's the, an image of the pool and one of our clock towers. So what do these communities do? They, you can keep going. So, and I'll just finish up with some renderings. This is a rendering of what the entrance would look like coming in off of Fork Shoals Road. So you can see the green in the middle, the amenities center right behind it, the two-story product lining the street, diagonal parking to give it the small-town feel. The vernacular here is small-town southern, kind of low-country type of design. Keep going, and then that is one of our greens with patio homes. Cottages would be in the back. And then I've got a couple of renderings of what our traditional multifamily would look like. So this would be the entrance coming off of the roundabout off of Ashmore Bridge with the clubhouse there in the background, and then one more image there of a three-story building. Those are all of our slides. Any questions? Or is that appropriate?
Yeah.
Or?
I got some questions.
Okay, sure.
So can you explain to me the build-to-rent model again?
Yeah, so it is built to rent, but we are not single-family houses. So, you know, that's the whole middle piece, is that we are not traditional apartments. We're not detached, single-family houses on lots. So we're in the middle.
That's where I guess I get confused. Idea of build-to-rent, basically it's duplexes and that sort of thing.
Yeah, so we've got, we've got detached cottages and duplexes, which are attached in the rear, which are essentially duplexes. We call them patio homes, but they have different orientations. Those are all single-level, right? And then the two-story product at the entrance. So again, you've got single-family detached on one end, traditional apartments on the other. We're in the middle.
Okay. Do you know, I mean, obviously, there's, we're talking projections. You'd have to build these things and then see what the market bears, but do you have any idea what the rent would be on these various products?
Good question. So we would, I'm really not able to give you a specific number here tonight, but I will tell you that the average rent will be over $2,000 a month. For the Cottage Green.
So when you're referring to the missing middle, the missing middle isn't necessarily a price point. The missing middle-
That's right.
More so the product, right?
That's right.
And the fact that it'd be located in that area. And I saw from the public hearing that Pastor Trammell, who of course, obviously the property is part of the, what you're seeking is his property and he's-
That's the piece that has to get annexed.
Yeah. He still made, the plan is still for him to maintain his church, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
And I don't know if there's a way, Seth, can you go back to the rendering? The one that Taft kept telling you to move and do this whole thing?
Since the pastor's not here to speak, so we would be buying 7.2 acres from them.
They'd still be maintaining it.
But, right. So they would still maintain the church. They have their separate stormwater pond. They have pretty big plans for their church.
Okay. So this commercial space underneath the Spinks, what type of business would go there in your mind? Obviously, again, you probably don't have anything lined up, but-
Yeah, well, so it would be anything allowed under C2. So, you know, we're not seeking to rezone that, so that would stay C2. So anything that fit in that category could be a quick-service restaurant, could be a building with, you know, two or three tenants in it. Don't know. But it would definitely be retail.
Just throwing out there, would it make any sense to do office out there, in your opinion?
Well, we could have an office tenant take part of a building. You know, there could be a physician practice-
Yeah.
That wanted to come out there, a dentist.
Okay. And then this, this big green area to the far left, what is that?
So that is the stormwater area.
That will be the stormwater. Okay. Perfect. Just wanted to make sure I understood. Writing all kinds of questions down, let me make sure I got them all in. There's the other one. All right, so you mentioned the infrastructure improvements and this idea of constructing the roundabout. So all of these different things that would go into alleviating the infrastructure, is that on the back of SCDOT to build and fund, or are you contributing monies toward those improvements?
The latter. Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Mr. Mattney, that's the end of my questions, if you have any.
I do, but I'm working them out in my head. They're not verbal questions. So at this point, we can go ahead and accept a motion. I think, I know that Mr. Steenback had some questions that he's looking to get answered, but I think that he was, he's good with going ahead and moving it forward. I would prefer to hold it, but Mr. Steenback would like to go ahead and move it forward and get his additional questions answered before it gets to council and then take it at that point.
Well, Mr. Mattney, you just answered my question, which was, I've kind of been in the same boat of holding it in committee, if you're okay with that. So I'll make a motion to hold this in committee, knowing that Mr. Steenback is not here, holding this in committee for one more meeting.
And then I will go ahead and second that. I assume there's no other discussion?
There's no other discussion. I think it is, I will say it is a very interesting project. I, obviously, we're not talking about price point, we're talking about product, and I haven't seen anything like this, so I think it is very interesting to look at. But knowing that it's only two of us and something like this, I think it is best to hold it and then eventually move it to full council, once Mr. Steenback has his opportunity as well.
All right. Well, unless there's any other discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and that item is going to be held in committee until next month. That gets us to 6F, Mr. Deerhog.
Excuse me. Hopefully 6E. All right. Thank you. Committee.
And let me go ahead and say, we're not taking the Take Heart Church, because that's really a part of the other piece.
Understood. So they'll-
So I guess we would need to go ahead and to formally move to hold it as well.
Yeah, do you want to make a separate motion, or you want me to-
Please.
Okay, I'll make a separate motion to hold into committee the annexation of 7.2-acre portion of property owned by Take Heart Church, located at 1330 Fork Shoals Road.
And I will second that. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, and 6D is held as well. All right, 6E, Mr. Deerhog.
All right, thank you, committee. So this text amendment to this, is to the zoning ordinance that concerns bars, brew pubs, and drinking places. Our ordinance requires that these types of businesses cannot be closer than 300 feet from any residential use in a residential zoning district. And this goes above and beyond what the state law requires. The state law requires a separation of 300 feet from parks, playgrounds, and schools, so we've gone above and beyond and added residences. But what this ordinance being presented to you tonight is to propose making the way that is measured consistent with the state ordinance, and so where they, how they outline that in state law. This went to the Planning Commission this past month. There was no comments offered at the public hearing, and the Planning Commission recommended unanimously to approve this ordinance, and that is also the recommendation of staff.
Very quickly, so we dealt with something similar not too long ago, but as it dealt with retail purchase.
Correct.
This is for on-premises consumption, and I'm assuming that that is to match up with what we did with retail purchase to take and go.
You got it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Allgood, any questions for Mr. Deerhog?
I don't have any questions on this one.
All right. Is there a motion?
I will make a motion to send this, send this ordinance to, this modified ordinance to full council for approval.
All right, we have a motion. I will second as their discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and we're moving that one forward to full council. All right, 6F, Mr. Deerhog.
All right, this last item is kind of a bit of a housekeeping, you might even say at this point. The state requires us every odd year to amend our business license ordinance, and because we are, our business license is part of that standard, standardized Business License Act that was adopted a few years back. So that is this year when we're being asked to update that. The changes that the state has passed on to us is reassigning some rate classes for a few of the different industry sectors, and those are listed in your report. We did kind of go through and do a preliminary analysis of this, just to see, based on last year's business license revenues, how would this new classification affect us? We did take a little bit of a hit, or will take a little bit of a hit, we expect, from this, maybe in the tune of roughly $40,000 in revenue, but, but we have to do it, so that's what's before you. We have till the end of the year to adopt this ordinance.
Well, this year has certainly been odd, so I guess it's appropriate that we deal with it. Mr. Allgood?
Mr. Mattney, oh, that was loud. Mr. Mattney- Mr. Mattney, I'd like to make a motion that we forward to full council this business license standard, standardization ordinance amendment.
All right, and I will second. Is there a discussion? The only discussion that I would like to offer is that I look forward, Ms. King, here and what you have to say when we move this to full council. And we're discussing it as a group since that is your area of expertise. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and we're forwarding that to full council. That brings us to our second public comment period. Going once, going twice. Many concerns?
None.
One more item of business.
Motion that we adjourn.
Second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it and we are adjourned at 7:13.
Okay, we're going to start another meeting in about two minutes. So I'll give you about two minutes if you wouldn't mind. You're welcome to continue discussions in the lobby. I will call to order the City of Malibu Special Call to City Council meeting of Monday, August the 4th, 2025 at approximately 7:18 PM. Let the record reflect that all members of council, with the exception of Mr. Steinback, are present in person, accounted for in their seats, along with our city administrator, our assistant city administrator and our city clerk, who keeps us all straight. Thank you for being here. All members of public, thank you for digging around. Anybody ending via Zoom? Okay, good. Welcome to have them. Our invocation and pledge of allegiance would be Ms. King. Would you do that?
Mr. Mayor, if you would bow with me now, please, for prayer. Dear gracious and loving God, as we begin our meeting, grant us wisdom in our discussion, clarity in our decisions and compassion in our leadership. It's in your name I pray, amen.
All rise.
Under God, indivisible, the liberate and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. King. Only thing before us tonight is new business, a motion to potentially enter an executive session. Concerns, it looks like the economic development item. Mr. Mattney, would you like to-
Thank you, Mayor. Move we enter executive session to consider negotiations incident of proposed contractual arrangements regarding Bridgeway Stadium as allowed under 30-4-70A2.
Thank you, Mr. Mattney. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Allgood. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor entering to executive session as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Hearing none, the motion is 6-0, executive session. We'll reconvene upstairs approximately seven. Because the cameras are here and-
All right. Coming back out of the executive session, reconvening here, would someone like to report out?
Thank you, Mayor. Coming out of executive session at 8:32, no decisions were made, no votes were taken.
Thank you, Mr. Matney. Next item on the agenda is possible actions items discussed in executive session. Anyone have anything? Seeing none, council request. Seeing none, adjournment.
So moved.
Mr. Matney and Mr. Fragling, all those who favor say aye.
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 We're adjourned at, what was it, seven thirty, eight thirty-three. Thank you, everyone.